Ms. Keys-Gamara. Ms. Maron. Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Omage.
Here.
Ms. Picarksky.
I'm here.
Ms. Seismarheiser.
I'm here.
Ms. Tolan.
I'm here.
Ms. Cohen. Okay, we will proceed. Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Here. I'm here.
Thank you. So with that, we will go ahead and proceed. We have a quorum at the table. Dr. Presidio, would you like to continue with the presentation on the walk to fall?
While they, Ms. Corbin Sanders, while the presentation was brought up, Dr. Braybrand would like to say a few things as we transition to this next section.
Okay, welcome, Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Just real quick, thank you again for the support and direction around graduation and summer school. We appreciate it very much. And we'll follow up on the next steps. I do want to just frame this part, this, this return to school in the fall is preliminary thinking. So there are no school board decisions that need to be made today. It's just information we want to share so you understand where we're at in our thinking. We are still very, very much hopeful that we will get additional guidance from the state. As you know, Governor Northam has done phasing of what it would look like for our business community. But there's work going on about how that would look in the world of schools and school districts. So we're looking for additional work or framing between now and early June. We brought you our best thinking with all of the resources we have. No decisions today. We certainly know we need to bring back to you in June a more detailed approach and we'll be asking you in June for what our final recommended approach is or approaches will be as we look at return to school. So thank you and Dr. Duran and Dr. Presidio.
Yes, and if someone can please bring up the PowerPoint. Dr. Presidio will continue with part two once the PowerPoint is up on, on the screen.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Duran. I'm just going to advance the slides here for just a second, and that will take a second, given that we have forty-seven slides. So we appreciate your patience with all the information that we're bringing to you today.
I believe we're going to page thirty-six.
That's correct. So as Dr. Braybrand said, you know, while we don't obviously have any detailed plans to share with you today, we are underway with our planning efforts for next school year. And we wanted to start out with talking about some of the considerations that we need to be working through as we develop those plans. And certainly, the first thing is to make sure that we can ensure a safe learning environment and a safe working environment for our students and for our staff. So that's first and foremost in our minds. Additionally, we're working to provide options for students and staff that might be unable to return to school or work. So even if we are able to come back without any social distancing requirements in place, we anticipate that we might have some students and staff due to personal health issues or family health issues that would be unable to return to school and work. And we're planning to determine what types of supports and options we can provide to those individuals. We're also working to try to figure out how we would comply with social distance requirements that we might receive from the state. And we're continuing to address those connectivity issues and technology access issues that have already been a part of this afternoon's discussion. Also, we're working to make sure that we can have adequate time in training to prepare our staff for the new school year with the understanding that there's a lot of contingencies that we need to be planning and preparing them for. And of course, we do want to make decisions as soon as possible, as Dr. Braybrand said, to make sure that we can provide information to the community and to begin to set up our scheduling and our operations for next school year as soon as possible. And of course, we do want to continue to involve all of our stakeholder groups in the planning process as we move forward. So with that in mind, those considerations in mind, there are actions that are currently being planned to address student learning and social emotional needs. And the first is that we're looking to adopt an evidence-based set of best practices and a curriculum to ensure that we have appropriate social emotional learning supports for all of our students in place. We think that's critical, given some of the issues that our students and family and staff have faced during school closure. Additionally, we know that we need to be revising some of our curriculum for next year. So that work is underway where we are attempting to prioritize the essential content standards and skills, including portrait of a graduate that students need to be successful. We're revising our curriculum for next year to include a fourth quarter review of content, major content, topics and standards that were covered during this quarter, as well as covering the most essential standards for next school year. Additionally, that means modifying our instructional delivery. So we know that we need models that are actually preparing our students and our teachers to be able to work in a blended learning environment and to be able to agilely, agilely deploy into a distance learning environment if we would need to do that in the future. Additionally, we're looking at making sure that we're supporting all of our special education students in receiving the necessary service levels. Our special education teachers have been doing a remarkable job working on temporary learning plans during the school closure period, working on IEPs, transition IEPs. And we know that we need to continue to support our students to receive the necessary service levels that they need when we come back for next school year as well. Also, we're working to make sure that we have a strong intervention program in place in all of our schools to make sure that we're ensuring that all of our students that have additional academic, social, emotional needs are able to be identified and be able to receive the services that they need to be successful, no matter what school they might be in in Fairfax County. And then finally, we think it's really important that we work with the board to continue to pursue accreditation waivers so that as a school system, we can really be putting students' needs first. We believe strongly that this is really the time to push the state and the federal government to allow us to focus on the needs of the whole child and not just be solely focused or overfocused on state standardized S scores and accreditation and accountability. So thinking about some of those actions that we're currently planning, and we have been able to advance the ball enough to look at some potential costs associated with those actions. And the first area, as I mentioned, that we're looking at is social emotional learning, because that's foundational for everything else that we want to do academically with our students. So we're looking at about a cost of about one million dollars to purchase a curriculum. We also need some additional assessment tools to go along with that curriculum for an additional million dollars. And we also strongly believe that we need to enhance some of our staffing ratios in key areas like counseling, psychology and social work. And you see the associated costs with each of those as well. The curriculum modifications that I talked about really start, first of all, with ensuring that our students have devices and connectivity. And as Mr. Smith mentioned earlier, we're looking at a way to put together essentially a technology adoption plan to fill the gap after we redeploy all of our existing resources. At the elementary level, we'd still have a gap, as Mr. Smith said, of about twenty thousand devices. And here you see the lease costs and the MiFi costs associated with trying to close that gap. If all of our students are equipped with devices and connectivity, we would like to have a digital curriculum in literacy and math in grades K eight that would be more student-facing, and that would give us the ability, if we're in a distance learning environment, to do a couple of things. One, not to be reliant on paper packets moving forward, where we have to write the curriculum. And certainly, there's a lot of costs with mailing the materials and distributing the materials in that way. But also have a curriculum that could be differentiated and more student self-directed. One of the challenges I think that we've had with the packets that we've been producing is that a lot of the tasks that we are including in those packets do require a lot of parental support. And we'd like to be able to provide something that would be a little bit more self-directed for our students to be able to use in the future. And then, as we mentioned earlier in the presentation, we really believe that our targeted intervention services need to be focused during the fall so that they can begin in the fall and occur throughout the entire school next year, next year. So we really are trying to preserve as much funding as we can to identify what additional staffing supports might schools need to be able to provide ongoing intervention services throughout next school year. And we're still trying to come up with a really precise costing model of that. And we'll have that information for you shortly. So then when we think about actually, what would the planning look like for fall 2020, there really are a couple of different scenarios that we can envision in terms of how we might come back to the school year. We have a pretty good understanding at this point of what student learning needs are, but unfortunately, we still lack clarity really around the time and the conditions that we might return under. And we're hoping to get more of that clarity from the state here in the coming weeks. But right now, our planning is really currently focused on being prepared for several different scenarios under which we might find ourselves operating next school year. And the first scenario would be if we were to start the school year virtually, meaning we'd be in distance learning. But at that point, we'd really be in distance learning two point O, because we would need to provide an enhanced version of what we're doing now. If we do start the school year virtually, one benefit would be that we would have some time to plan to figure out how would we start the school year in a virtual learning environment. We would have opportunities to be thoughtful about how we would build community and build relationships in a distance learning environment, support students in those orientations, support students as they transition into new grade levels and into new schools. And we would have an opportunity to establish some of those really important virtual learning routines that unfortunately, we really had to invent in the moment and didn't have the opportunity to do in a really thoughtful manner when we originally closed schools in March. We do believe that we would have enhanced distance learning resources in place by the beginning of the year. Again, addressing those technology and connectivity and curriculum needs that we've already discussed. And very importantly, we would have an opportunity to revise our instructional schedules to make sure that they're really meeting student learning needs. And we've begun our collaboration with our principal associations and our teacher associations. We need to continue to work really closely with them to develop the schedules that we believe would best meet student learning needs if we're in a virtual start to the school year. And then finally, we've begun to do some additional work on establishing community partnerships. And we need to do a lot more work here, because we really believe that Fairfax County Public Schools cannot be the only answer to meeting students and families' needs. We've got to work with our county government. We've got to work with nonprofit organizations. And we've got to work with face-based organizations to figure out how we can provide some of the necessary supports and services like childcare services that so many of our families need now and will continue to need as we move into next school year. So that's scenario one, which would be, again, a virtual start to the school year. Scenario two would be returning, but returning with social distancing in place. And if we do have social distancing regulations, first, we want to really point out that that may require us to think about serving students based on their level of need. Meaning, we may need to identify those students that most require in-school or face-to-face supports and provide those services to students first. So what do I mean by students that would really require face-to-face supports? Well, first of all, we'd need to look at their IEP levels of need. We'd need to look at our English language learners who are at lower WEDA levels and really need the additional language supports that would be more, more easily delivered in an in-person environment. And we need to think about students' developmental needs as well. It's obviously a lot easier for a high school student or a middle school student to be operating and learning in a virtual classroom. And when you think about our kindergarten students, first grade students, second grade students, those students at the primary grades, developmentally, they really don't have the attention span and the ability to be as successful in distance learning. And we may need to bring some of those students back into our schools first if we do have social distancing restrictions in place. Additionally, we need to think about probably alternating our schedules. As you saw earlier in the presentation with the slide from Mr. Plattenberg, when you think about using our classrooms and, you know, reducing our amount of facility space in half, we obviously would need to think about having some students attend school on one day and other students learning virtually at home on the same day. And we have different models about how we could actually put alternating schedules in place. And we're working on developing an analysis of those models to provide a recommendation on the preferred model to you again in a June work session coming up here shortly. We're also working on developing guidelines around non-classroom spaces. So what would social distancing look like in cafeterias and hallways, on the playground, on our buses? We're working on that right now. And it is very, very difficult to imagine what that would look like. But that is what we're being asked to do, and we're doing our very best to provide you with some information on that. And then again, those community partnerships, we believe, are really critical, still in a social distancing return to school. And then the third scenario is if we're all able to return to school without any social distancing requirements, we still believe that we are going to have some students and some staff members who would not be able to return for personal reasons like health issues and health concerns. The sooner that we knew that, the better position we would be in to be able to actually differentiate our needs and provide different supports and options to those students or to those staff members. So early notification would be very helpful here. At the high school level, we do believe that we could increase our enrollment in our online campus program and offer more course sections to serve our high school students. At the middle school and the elementary school level, we are looking, as several board members have already suggested, at different enrollment opportunities and different online providers like Virtual Virginia. Virtual Virginia, by the way, is developing an elementary and a middle school program. And we're working very closely with them and meeting with them several times a week to see if that might be a program that would meet our needs. If we're not able to find an online provider for students that might need to stay home, we would look to group students at the elementary and the middle school level into class sections that would be taught, which would contain students that were currently learning together in an online section. And that would certainly be very efficient in terms of targeting the instruction to a group of students that way. However, if we didn't have enough students that would warrant an entire class section, we may be forced to look at serving students in the same class section who are attending in a face-to-face environment and in an online environment. And again, that would be an incredibly, incredibly challenging assignment for teachers. So we'd really need to figure out how we could make that work. And a lot of this just has to do with how many students might we be talking about? And how early would we be able to have that information so that we could establish the schedules that would most meet students' needs and also be schedules that staff members would be able to support effectively and efficiently? And then, this isn't really a scenario for returning to school, but even after we return, we know that we need to make sure that we're prepared for any future closures. So we're working to develop our plans to move back into distance learning, if that was something that needed to happen. And we believe several components of that plan certainly require, first of all, a very tight communication network where we're able to provide information on what's happening division-wide and what's happening in our individual schools. We believe that we need to make sure that we're building really strong routines where we're continuing to use blended learning strategies to make sure that we're practicing those strategies and ready if we needed to move back into a distance learning environment. And we believe that needs to happen at all of our grade levels and all of our courses. And then finally, we need to make sure that we've got the curriculum resources and the instructional strategies in place that are going to allow us to make sure that we can meet our state-level standards for SOL standards and expectations to serve our students even in a distance learning environment. So those are the major scenarios, three scenarios, and then preparation for future closures that we wanted to share with you. And then finally, what we've done here is identified what we believe to be the total budgetary needs for our summer programs and for fall as we currently understand them. So you see, there's two columns, one column for cost, recurring, and one column for one-time costs that we've tried to differentiate. So we've got costs for facilities, cleaning supplies, PPE is one-time cost, health services staffing, for example, as a recurring cost. And you can see down at the bottom, the total of those two costs totals about twenty, twenty-four point two million dollars, which we do believe is within the amount of carryover, oh, excuse me, not carryover, COVID reserve and anticipated CARES Act funding. But the one big caveat here is that we have not included yet, because we've not been able to determine an actual cost for additional intervention support staffing. But this gives you an idea of what we believe to be some of those preliminary cost estimates. So with that, given that it's five o'clock, we certainly want to turn it back over to board discussion and questions regarding any of the information with our initial thinking about plans for returning to school in the fall.
And before that, just for the public's sake, on this budget slide, the CARE stimulus funding we're anticipated to receive is twenty point eight million. And the COVID set aside reserve in the operating budget that the board will be discussing Thursday and voting on on the twenty-first is eight million dollars. So as Sloan, Dr. Presidio said, this amount right now, as it stands, and this is just initial thinking, is underneath that amount that is being set aside. So before we turn it back over to Chairman Corbin Sanders, I want to just again thank all of our stakeholders and all of the various work groups. There have been many, many, many people and many voices into this thinking. And not only what you just heard now, but part one and part two, which we just discussed in terms of the consensus. So on this last slide, you'll see it says board direction on budgetary priorities, but we don't need decisions or consensus today, because that's still in the works. But we want to, if there's any questions about those. And then in June, a work session where there will need to be consensus and decisions like we just did for summer, but as it relates to returning in the fall. So again, a huge thank you to everyone. It's been a lot of amazing work going into this and a lot of good thinking as we wait of the state's plan that should be coming in June. Thank you, Chair Corbin Sanders.
Thank you, Dr. Duran. And we are very appreciative of all of the hard work that everybody has put into this. I know that there were a lot of people who were very involved in in developing these recommendations. And so that is appreciated. I will note that many of our board members have just seen this. Well, all of the board members have just seen this for the first time today. And so this will be the beginning of the conversation. It will not be the end of the conversation. And having said that, I have a number of our board members who would like to speak. I'm going to start with Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Maron.
Thank you so much. I do understand that this is a work in progress, so I appreciate the foundation. And so I'm not looking for responses to my questions unless you feel compelled that you already have them and they were just not included. I just wanted to offer them as points for consideration. Just going through the scenario, scenario one, one of the things that I think would be important for us to ensure that we delineate in all of the scenarios really are the grading impacts and whatever it is those addition, the revisions to the schedules would be. I, I think that needs to be articulated as we move along that process, because as we know, we have a, a number of parents who are looking for a more robust distance learning experience, particularly for more additional hours beyond what is already, what is being provided in the short term at this point. With scenario two, I would like to make sure that we have additional information regarding the stagger as we bring in our most vulnerable students. I'd like to, to, to know whether or not we're looking at, is it an hourly transition? Is it a, a daily transition where you go Monday, Wednesday, or whatever that may be? Or is it that we bring this group for X amount of time and then we add on the additional groups? So I'd like to have that information, as well as the impact on staff that you referred to were in the works regarding those different models. For scenario three, one of the things I'd like to offer for consideration is kind of a survey from parents in terms of what their intent may be moving forward at some point, that it makes sense to do so. So we can gather that data in terms of how many parents will not let their children return to school despite, you know, where we are. I think having some sort of communication and timeline regarding that will be very helpful. Similarly to staff, how many aren't able to return? I know that similarly around this time, well, probably a couple of months ago, we would have started the intent to return. I, I'd like to hear how that's going to be impacted, given the situation that we are in. One of the last points that I want to make, it's really critical, particularly because we've had our hands slapped so much about this in the past few weeks. We must have a robust infrastructure so that connectivity, devices, this is not a situation that we continue to, and this is not a conversation we continue to engage in. The infrastructure must be robust. It must be plentiful. And we must plan for it as we have the opportunity to do at this point. The other piece I'd like to see some more regarding is, again, based in this place, I'll just finish this one statement, Madam Chair, if that's okay. Regarding, and super quick, ten seconds, expectation of all staff, having really clear expectations, what will each members of our workforce will be doing given each of these scenarios, because I don't think we have it now, and that causes a little bit of frustration. Thank you, and I apologize for going over my time.
So Dr. Presidio or Dr. Duran, do you want to provide any, a response to any of that? Or are you planning on coming back at the end with some themes?
So this is Sloan. I mean, I guess I would just say, I think Dr. Anderson raises some really good points. All things which we do need to consider and many of which we are considering. So certainly, we will include that information in the next iteration of the plan that we would bring to the board with much more specifics and details for you to respond to in early June.
Thank you. Ms. Maron?
Yes. So I want to say that I see a lot of the feedback that we've put into the leadership team and staff incorporated in this presentation, as well as input from teachers and the community. So I, I think it's a really great framework to start with. So thank you. Just a confirmation of a few things I heard. So I agree with you, Dr. Presidio, that this is an excellent opportunity to reform what our students need and not be boxed in by standards that don't serve us not only in this time, but even previously. So I would just say, Dr. Braybrand, you know, we'll need to make sure we have a really robust government relations effort here, because we want to make sure that the school board can help in providing some of those state waivers and other things that will need. I think expansion of online campus and also Virtual Virginia will be very welcome. That's been of interest in the community. Question about teachers. So if we are going to do the rotation of days on, days off, how is it going to work for teachers so that they aren't expected to essentially be doing two different ways of teaching all the time? You know, if students are learning at home virtually and teachers are in the classroom with students, how are teachers expected to keep up with the classroom students and the home home educated, you know, students? So really being sure that, I would love to hear more about how, what the plan is for that, so that we're not overburdening our teachers with like an undoable job. I don't expect an answer for that today. The other thing too, you did mention our earliest learners, our K-two students, and I'm glad to hear that. But I would like more information about how we are going to really acclimate our youngest learners in particular to school when so much of it developmentally relies on trust-building and being comfortable in school and learning. We had an advantage, and so, an advantage loosely defined in the closure happening when our little ones were already in school for several months, that they had developed the routines and the relationships. But some of these students will be starting from the beginning. So I would really like to see much more about how to serve those students and help the teachers with that as well. They can't share manipulatives, even if they're in the classroom or, you know, touch the same things. So that would be helpful to hear. I'm also wondering if there's thought being given about mixing age groups of students. Given that sometimes that has been difficult, you know, because of social development and emotional development, perhaps in an online environment, there might be opportunity to meet students' needs who are advanced or need more help and can have a wiggle room between ages and grades. Finally, I just want to mention how, I'd like to know more about how we're going to support our career and tech programs virtually, especially if some of them were hands-on. And I too, like Dr. Anderson, am interested in, I think she mentioned grading, but grading and attendance. And is this optional learning like we have it now? So thank you very much. I look forward to the next.
So Dr. Presidio or Dr. Duran, do you want to respond, or are you going to bring back more details in the future?
Yeah, again, this is, this is. Yeah, again, this is, this is Sloan. I, I think those are great comments and great suggestions again. A lot of really good things for us to think about that we'll incorporate into the next presentation. You know, I think probably a lot of board members are going to have suggestions for us, which is exactly what we were hoping to hear today. So we welcome those. If there is something very specifically that you would want a response to on any of your suggestions or questions, you know, just let us know and we'll try to work through each of those here this afternoon.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate the comments of my colleagues thus far. I too just, first of all, thank you for all of this work. And I just want to mention a few things for consideration. First of all, getting off on a good, a good foot with our community, I think is really important and including a communications plan with parents and students so that they understand how we are proceeding, I think may help to alleviate some of the anxiety we have seen thus far. I am really glad to see a focus on those kids who simply do not thrive in the virtual environment and look forward to seeing a plan on how we will support them in a similar fashion. I'm looking forward to how we focus on social and emotional needs. Perhaps we could consider something like lunchtime. I know I've seen it in some other much smaller environments, and I know FCPS doesn't really compare to that, but those types of gatherings online when kids are not able to be in the brick and mortar setting may well be something that we would like to consider. And I'm, I'm also glad to see the idea of rotations. The, I, I fully am aware that we simply do not know what to expect. And so I'm glad to see that there is a broad plan for various scenarios. And I, I do realize how difficult this is, so I thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, like my colleagues, I thank you for putting this together with so many unknowns. And I'll just kind of give a list of questions or things that, you know, I've heard from constituents or I've been thinking about, and we'll look forward to getting more information. I do want us to look really, really carefully at the numbers of devices that we need. I know many of our schools have given out, you know, their devices. And I think that the, what's left in our buildings is pretty slim, and I, I'm not confident that we will get back devices that have been given out to students, including across our middle schools. So really want to make sure we have a good solid number of devices that we need and what the budget is associated with that. Of course, we were talking about purchasing digital curriculum that's more student facing, particularly in the areas of literacy and math. And would like to know for science and social studies, for example, why those were not included and what we, what is our plan to make sure that students can still achieve in those areas as well? I was wondering, you talked about alternating days as part of a potential, you know, part of one of the scenarios if we need to distance learn and have social distancing. Alternating days, I'm wondering if there, if you also looked at a PM, alternating times as well and what the differences might be? I think with the various scenarios, they will require different types of staff professional development to prepare for them, and I'm sure you're thinking about that. So I'd be interested in a little more information. You did start to mention childcare under each scenario. You know, a number of our working families have been stretched thin on, you know, to date already. So I think we're, I applaud that you're looking at that and want to make sure that we're very careful in making sure we have consolidated plans for childcare for our families. Looping grade levels is something that is possible to help our students that, you know, have relationships with teachers, especially our younger students. So I'd be interested if you've looked at that at all, you know, so that students could start this school year with the same teacher that they had this year to help us also even know those students a little bit better and what their needs are and also have that, those relationships continue. I also am sure we need very, very clear expectations of our students, what parents will be required to do and our staff, and my other colleagues mentioned staff already. And would be very interested in what our plan is to do from the community as we move forward over the next couple of months, you know, to make sure that we're meeting their needs. Thank you. Sorry, it's a long list.
Excellent. And what I'm going to ask each of my colleagues to do is, you all are making some excellent comments, but they're not being answered today. They're kind of a forward-looking, these are questions you're going to have at a more robust session. So also send them on to Dr. Braybrand with a courtesy copy and similar to budget questions, we'll put together a document with all these questions. Okay, I have, was it Ms. Keys-Gamarra next and then Ms. Cohen? I somehow.
No, I spoke already.
Okay, I apologize. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. I, like my colleagues, have so many questions. The first is, I hope that you guys will give us a very clear criteria for what returning to classrooms looks like. So I want to make sure that we have the data behind it to say, this is our cutoff, this is how we're going to make these decisions. You know, I'm concerned about what other divisions are doing locally. So I know Dr. Braybrand is in conversations with local area superintendents and that the intention would be that we have a NOVA-wide decision. And I think that makes a lot of sense, especially when you even think about TJ, where we are getting schools from all kinds of different localities. So it would only make sense for us to all be on the same page. So I, I want to ensure that that happens. I also would, I highly support getting rid of SOLs as, as many of you who know me know, I am not a fan at all. So I would like to see whatever the board can do to help make sure that that happens. We're willing to lobby whoever you want us to, to, to get rid of those for next year, waive the requirements. But also I want to make sure then that we're not doing the wraparound fall SOLs that we initially talked about offering. My other questions, special ed, you know, the TLPs, as you know, have been a tough go for many of us. Some of us are still being told that it will be amending our IEPs, which I know is not what we were expecting or told. So again, just more clarification about what that would look like going forward in Plan A, B, and C. And childcare, I think, is one of the biggest ones. I totally agree with Ms. Tolan. I think coordination with the county is going to be key to making sure that if we were required to have social distancing, that we wind up using rec centers or all available space to still secure SAC for our kids. I know I've had, just like my colleagues, many people who are very concerned about being able to keep their jobs and keep their homes. And so whatever we can do to be helpful to them. The big thing for me is feasibility. I, I have to be honest that when I look at the idea of a plan that increases the number of buses, we already at current have an 80-driver bus driver shortage here. So I want to make sure that we're being reasonable about what something looks like on paper versus what is actually manageable. And so I have some really significant concerns about the hybrid approach when we look at feasibility. So I look forward to hearing again soon, and I appreciate all the work that you all are doing to get us in a good place to start the year.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. I do realize this is hard to plan. We don't know what's ahead. And you're, you're bringing us some very preliminary ideas. So with that, I agree with Ms. Cohen. I think parents are looking for some clear criteria of how we are going to get kids back in school. For me and from what I'm hearing from my community, the idea of an all-distance approach is, is extremely troublesome and absolutely not where people would like to see us go. We know jobs are going to be starting up again, and that is going to create lots of issues when it comes to kids at home, parent involvement, distance learning. And another point with that, which I'm really wondering, last month, we were told that we had to make an order for our middle school one-to-one program. And that was, it had to be fast and quick or we wouldn't get devices. So how does that kind of flow with this where we're going to need to buy all these new devices? Where are you going to find them? And is it no longer time critical?
So the, the answer to that, Ms. Bukarski, is that it is still time critical. We know that as we look at a possible large purchase of devices for our elementary students, regardless of the device, we know that we'll have to go through an RFP process. We know that, that supply chains have been impacted. And so it could be a three to four-month window even to get a portion of the devices that we might need. Again, we're looking at a, a lower number of devices to fill the gap, so to speak, with the 18,000 that we've identified and then using the, the computers that we have in inventory to provide the access for those students without access. So those are all things that we will be considering and we'll have more information for the board as we bring information back for, for the presentation.
Thank you. And it does sound that that would be something critical and information that we will need to have in hand as soon as possible. I have had many in the community ask about possibly changes to calendar. Has that been discussed at all? And can you speak to that a little bit?
Ms. Bukarski, yes. The work group did look at potential options and changes to calendar as a discussion point, but there was no, there, at this time, there's no recommendation around that because we are waiting to see from the state-level COVID-19 task force coming into June, where they will be giving us clear guidance from a Commonwealth perspective on when we can reopen, not reopen. And so at this time, there's been no discussion or, or movement towards changing the calendar per se for students as it is now. The only thing that we did discuss, as we mentioned in the professional development slide, was potentially looking at some days where students could be doing online self-directed learning, so teachers could be doing professional development. But those were all with the confines of how the calendar currently stands. But again, that could potentially change once we get the recommendations from the governor's office beginning in June.
Thank you. I thought that was important to note because it is a concern for some in the community. And my last comment really centers around maybe being more creative in the ways we would go back to school. And you talked a little bit about that with our more vulnerable populations, maybe expanding into, you know, some of the ideas that I saw that our principals put out there, which were amazing, you know, maybe our older kids doing more distance learning and just being very creative in that so that we could get those kids who really need and will be most impacted with being out of school into those schools with social distancing and safety protocols. So that's what I will be looking for. So thank you for your work so far.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you very much. A lot of the statements I wanted to make were discussed by my colleagues earlier, so I'm not going to repeat those, but a couple of things in addition to what people have said earlier. One of the things I wanted to mention is I am concerned that we don't right now have a budgetary item for intervention support staff because I know that we'll really need to look at those intervention pieces, social, emotional trauma. So I think it'd be important to have more information on that, as well as if there's possibilities of additional COVID funding or ways we can help advocate for that for those intervention pieces, since it looks like a lot of our budget is, is already, initial extra funding is taken up. So that's the first piece. The second piece, I want to make sure we don't lose our arts and our CTE and those courses in our planning. I, I understand it's difficult and we're focusing on essential learning, but for a lot of our students who are going on to those programs or to the workforce, those are important to them too. So I want to make sure that is taken into consideration in our planning, especially at the secondary level. The other piece I had is I wanted to be careful with the waiver piece. I, I fully support the need for waiving our SOLs, but I want to make sure we're taking into account those students who are getting an applied studies diploma while building towards a standard diploma and who are counting on being able to be able to access Davis or Holy or STEM, that the waiver possibility extends for them beyond this year. So we're not unintentionally hurting them by giving them a standard diploma and then, which then takes away access to those programs. So I, I like to see that in there as well. In terms of our vulnerable populations, I just want to put a plug in for taking into account how we best support both this year and next year, those students at critical transition points, i.e. sixth graders going to middle school, eighth graders going to high school, rising seniors, both this year going to next year and the year after that. So just other piece again, I'm just trying to add what my colleague has said, not repeating. In scenario one, I would like to make a plug to make sure that we have, again, a more robust plan, but that includes more synchronous learning, even if it's staggered, to, to take screen time in a break, because I think that's one of the things I hear from my community a lot is making sure that what we're doing is really effective for students' learning. In scenario three, when you mentioned the students who may not be able to go back to school, I wanted to make sure that for those students, we have social, emotional support for them as well because remaining at home with other students doing face-to-face learning is also going to be very lonely and isolating. So make sure that's a piece of that planning. And I would encourage looking at calendar, like Stella said, but also I wanted to talk about technology needs. You mentioned in your budget about devices, but I want to make sure that we are looking in our planning at our platforms and how we're providing technology to make sure we don't have issues around connectivity and if there's a budgetary component to having to add additional platforms and things, that we talk about that in June. I think that was about it this new, I think, is that my timer, Ms. Sanders?
That's your timer. Thank you.
Okay, so again, don't need an answer, just want to put those out for, to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. So I, I share my colleague's desire that we're going to need to come back and look at this more carefully. It's going to be critical that the public absolutely gets an understanding where we're coming from. But here's where I am high level. One, I would like to see when we come back, that staff has done a very careful crosswalk with the other Washington area school divisions on what they're planning to do for fall 2020. I would like to see what the other top 20 largest school divisions are doing. And I also want some analysis sooner rather than later about the other countries that have already started to reopen and resume school. I know Wall Street Journal today talked about Spain, Italy, the United, uh, United Kingdom, Australia, Denmark, Sweden. They're all focused on, we will be reopening and what that looks like. And I am hearing from a lot of our working families, especially those with young children, very concerned the if part as opposed to how. So we all want to ensure that we have strong, effective public health measures in place. But I, I also want our families to understand where our commitment is. So it is May, a lot will happen before September, but next month's meeting will be very critical as we pull this out. I also want to say that it's very troubling when we did our distance learning for this spring, that we had very limited direct instruction. We were told that we could not do an FCPS online campus model where you had more intensive direct instruction. That has got to be fixed if we have to look at some of these other scenarios. We cannot have high school kids, let alone middle school kids, getting six hours of instruction a week. It's untenable. So I really also appreciate my colleagues talking about a communications plan that maps out for our families what the expectations are going to look like. And then I do think that this board absolutely will need to have representation from the public health department when we have these conversations. Ms. Trautman works for Fairfax County Public Schools. She is not part of the public health department, and we're going to need them at the table to have these very serious conversations. So right now, at this point, I just want to make sure that our families are hearing a motivation and a commitment that we want their a motivation and a commitment that we want their children to return back to school. And if we're looking at childcare and students being in childcare, like Sack, then we have to be understanding how we can get them back in the classroom as well. And finally, Laura Jane, to your point about the bus drivers, we just had the presentation on middle schools, that the bus driver shortage creates a problem. So that's a very real conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
I would like to respond, Ms. McLaughlin. The Health Department officials have definitely committed to us that they would love to come and be a part of conversations about returning in the fall. So they certainly have made that commitment and would like to do that. Secondly, I want to reaffirm what you said, that we do want all students back in school. And the what versus the if in this conversation today is solely based upon the fact that we do not yet have what the governor and what the order will be. We are under state order to be closed, and so we need to be following that. We did look at some other county, excuse me, countries and how they did and what they did, and we have a lot of that information we can bring back. But again, all of those countries were given the ability to, under order, reopen. So as soon as we get that specificity in the beginning of June, that is all of our goal, and it was the goal of all the members of the three work groups that focused on this, what we could do to get people back in school and in a healthy, safe way with the Health Department, who will definitely be here or have representatives here for the next conversation.
Wonderful, Dr. Durand. Thank you for reiterating the commitment that we want to do it. It's just how we'll do it.
Mr. Fresh?
Thank you. So I'm grateful that we've seen a pumping of the brakes in Northern Virginia as it come, as it relates to the governor's plan for reopening. The data that I've looked at shows that we still haven't peaked yet in Virginia with infections. And so I think you have a lot of parents and staff, teachers, et cetera, who are wondering how on earth we can return if that's the case. You know, I would be interested to know, you know, I see a tension between scenarios two and three. What happens if we're in scenario two with social distancing, but you still have staff and families who don't feel it's safe to come back to school, even though that's what they're being told to do?
I could certainly say, Mr. Fresh, that I think that's a real, I think that's a real good point. I mean, that is one of the things that we have to figure out. We'd want to figure out early if folks don't want to come back really for the fall at all. But that is a real tension, even when we put the safety requirements in, we follow Health Department guidelines, some of our staff and students. We believe we're already planning that they would not want to come back. How are we going to make them comfortable? How are we going to support them socially, emotionally? So I think you're right, and we just don't, we're still working through that tension, as you so accurately described it. It is a tension. And how are we going to work through it? And we are going to work through it and bring you our best thinking over the next few weeks.
I mean, the way that I look at it is somebody who has asthma, right? I can't imagine going about business as usual unless there's a vaccine or a medication that keeps death from occurring. So I can only imagine what other people might be feeling too.
Right.
On the technology front, I know that we've got about a little over 1,200 MiFi devices and that we have another order of 800 on the way. I get the sense from my constituent feedback that we're not meeting the need on the internet front and would like to know from a technology perspective, what more can be done to increase the number of, I'd rather have a surplus of devices than a dearth of people who are not able to connect. On the social distancing front, I think guidelines are fantastic, but I've seen what it's like to line up a group of first graders. I can't imagine how we're going to put social distancing guidelines into effect in our schools when I think about cafeterias and hallways and everything else. The photo of the classroom with the desks spread out is one thing, but these things in practice, I'm just having trouble imagining how we can police that. I went to Costco two weeks ago and I saw grown adults ignoring the social distancing guidelines that the store was imposing on people. And they have, at least ostensibly, the ability to self-control. So I think that's something that we have to weigh, is that the likelihood of being able to police the social distancing is very, it's very difficult to pinpoint on. My last, my last point would be to reiterate what you've probably heard, what you have from other people, which is that we need a clear articulation sooner rather than later as to why we would return to school, what those conditions are. And I hope that whatever our plan is, that it at least has the ability to benefit from the independent audit that's now being conducted about our first run of distance learning. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. If I could, Chairman Corbett Sanders, I just want to say one thing. We've made it very clear to the state, and I think we're going to need to in our communications plan, talk about the issue of social distancing as what we aspire to do. But the idea that we can guarantee every child 100% of the time in school will be social distancing, I think is an unrealistic expectation for our teachers and principals. So we're really going to have to set the expectations of striving for social distancing, but not being able to say at every moment, your child will be social distanced. It's going to be, social distancing is a layered strategy on top of PPE, on top of temperature checks, on top of health questionnaire, on top of reduced movement. So it's going to have to be a layering versus an all-and-out guarantee every moment. And we'll be bringing you more on that in the next few weeks.
And then, and then a parent might look at all of those different layered approaches and say, that still doesn't keep my child from being able to pick it up and take it home.
Right.
Or to take it from home and spread it around the school. So I think we've got these very serious things that we have to address when we do articulate exactly how and under what circumstances we can reopen. Look, there is a rush to reopen all over the country, and people are comparing themselves, just as they're naturally going to do, to other things that they see happening. But we're unique and we measure these things based off of what is best for us. And right now, I mean, we're closed for a reason right now, right? And what is actually going to change that would make it so that we can return safely?
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. Ms. Omeish?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of things here. So the first, I think similar to, you know, others who shared, I'm not entirely convinced that this opening is the path forward. I want to also, you know, mention cloth masks themselves are not preventing transmission, right? So that's something to just keep in mind. But regardless, I think we need to plan for both possibilities and be prepared for all the outcomes. So I would hope that that's part of it. If nothing else, then also for the potential lack of buy-in I anticipate from families who may not want to send their kids and potential second waves, right, that we've heard about. The second thing I wanted to mention or flag is how we're going to be tracking student progress. I think there may be a little bit more work that we could do there, in particular overseeing, ideally to a one-to-one level. But, you know, earlier I had referred to this as a custodian or some kind of person who's responsible for those children who are not, whose parents are unavailable or, you know, unable to help them. That's my second point. I'd love to hear what our intentional kind of steps are in that regard, especially after learning from what's happened already and seeing maybe how we can troubleshoot or how staff can be utilized based on how things have played out. The third thing I want to mention is consideration for our own self-evaluation. So firstly, maybe at the end of this school year, setting up a time for us to really kind of analyze and give a thorough look at how things went and where things can be improved moving forward. And then adding checkpoints for our own review in the coming year and outlining maybe feedback mechanisms or recourse opportunities or whatever that looks like, whether that's for the public or our staff, but that are kind of incrementally, or like we anticipate that that's going to be points of time where we pause and think and improve and move forward in that way. My fourth point, I wanted to also just emphasize the importance of looking at gaps in academics. I know I like, I'm encouraged by hearing the socio-emotional pieces. I want to, you know, add the academic piece. I think, you know, tutoring or office hours, that kind of stuff will probably need more support than we're anticipating. And I will add, again, in addition, it is mental health awareness week, but I'll say that mental health, I think, can be separate too from socio-emotional needs, and that's something that we should probably consider in how we want to, you know, further. Finally, I want to bring back the question of technology. I'm glad that, you know, Carl mentioned the MiFi shortage piece, that we were a little conservative in giving those out. You know, we were originally told that the old or slow laptops were going to be given to students temporarily, right? Those were pulled out for urgent circumstances. I don't know where we left off on that. Are we planning to kind of give students the equipment, reliable equipment for the year? And then the volume needed to Stella's point, I think it's still, I mean, I wouldn't want us to be stuck in a situation where we have to make a multimillion-dollar purchase in a tight timeframe. So I do think we should kind of give a little more thought to that based on the response I heard. But yeah, sorry, because I've heard inconsistent information, like, you know, high schoolers have it, middle schoolers do, and then I heard, oh, middle schoolers don't, elementary school certainly doesn't. So and there's no way that the amount of laptops we have right now, right, are going to make, no matter how many we have in a classroom, there's usually just one car that moves around, right? It's not going to be enough for every elementary school, six. So anyway, I'll leave it at that. I would love to hear thoughts and hope that some of this can be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Dr. Braybrand, do you want to respond to that before we go to Ms. Dernak-Kopax?
Yeah, several things there. A couple of things I would say to Ms. Omeish and to the board. First, let me go back on the technology. We've got the technology for high school, all brand-new laptops. We've ordered the technology for middle school that we expect in prior to the school year beginning. So we're good middle and high. What we have for you today preliminarily is all of the current inventory of laptops we've distributed or that we still have, and we're still trying to distribute even to lower grades, all of that. We need at least 18,000 more to be able to give to a kid K through six. Now, that, that, that amount is still, you know, whatever it was, a couple of million. It's not enough to give every kid a brand-new computer. That is more money. So that's one of the things we can look at, but it does give us coverage to every kid. And some kids have computers at home, some don't. But that's based on just covering the gap of access for a computer for every child. You and a couple of other board members, I just want to clarify, you know that I am a co-chair of the State Accreditation Task Force. We've already waived no SOLs in the fall. Not going to happen. The state superintendent has now said it publicly, no SOLs in the fall. We are making recommendations, frankly, this month that include a recommendation to waive SO, to waive SOL accreditation in the spring. So there would still be SOLs, but it would not count for purposes of accreditation. And I expect there to be recommendations for us to have the Board of Education as they start to unpack the standards of accreditation, which they were agreeing to do based on legislation this board supported. They were looking at dropout rate, that they're going to unpack even more of that, given COVID-19, and we can really look at the accreditation process in greater detail. So I hope that's helpful on some of your points. And I agree with a self-evaluation process that, as Mr. Fresh said, short-term from the report, but even longer term in the next six months, the next year, to see what we've done well and what we can do better is very important.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Ms. Dernak-Kopax?
Thank you. I agree with much of what my last two colleagues have said, particularly the tension that is going to exist between the, the ability for us to adequately social distance if we would open up and how that will affect certain more vulnerable populations if they have underlying health issues. The one thing I want to, I guess, ask, have you talked about the scenario? And when we're talking about scenario two, where we're opening, but if you're looking at the data, and again, it's the data that I brought up before, where certain areas of our community are having higher instances, and what if they continue that way? I would be reluctant to follow scenario two if not everybody could follow it. But have you talked about the possibility of doing that? I think there's real equity issues in that. But I guess that is the bridge between scenario two and three. Is that something that you have talked about? That's one thing. I think as we move into June, so I'm going to shout that, that's a question. But my other comments are, as we move into June, I think we're going to have constant communication on that this is an ever-changing situation. We may think one thing in June and we may not, that may not be the reality come September. And Dr. Braybrand, I think it's imperative that you present that to your, your team, your principals, and everyone, and it's us, up to us as a board to say, you know, we can't possibly predict even our best guess what September will look like right now. Regarding the MiFi and laptops, I had a little bit different understanding and it's anecdotal. But, you know, not all kids were able to get exactly what they needed in middle school. I understand that some of those were refurbished computers. There's one-to-one, but some of them are having problems. And I think that that has to be dealt with when we talk about what's the reality of what we need. And I do agree with members of the board who talked about, I know your team is meeting with health department authorities, but I think we also might need periodic meetings. So we understand, so everybody understands what the Health Department in Fairfax County is saying and doing. And it, we are, we are far removed from other portions of the state where, that may feel very comfortable opening up where we, as a community, or even some close by, but we do not.
Thank you, Ms. Dernak-Kopax. We will make sure that we get the, a meeting with the Health Department soon.
Right. And I think Dr. Braybrand was going to try to answer.
Just very quickly, very quickly, the Council for Great City Schools, and I'll let Ms. Troughton jump in here. One of the scenarios for planning on that scenario two is if we reopen with social distancing and we find a positive case for a kid or a child, that school would close. Again, I believe the national recommendation is two to five days. And Ms. Troughton can tell me if that's slightly different than what our local Health Department is saying. It would close for deep cleaning for two to five days and then reopen after that period of time. So that is part of the tension point of some communities where, like you said, the positive test rate, you mentioned is 37%. In Virginia right now, it's about eight to 12%. So that community you mentioned is almost three times the positive rate. But I believe, Ms. Troughton, is that right? That if there was a positive hit, it would be a short-term day closure with deep cleaning and then reopening?
Yes, that's correct, Dr. Braybrand.
Okay. And we'll definitely get the Health Department here for our June meetings with you.
And then clarity on the, the middle school laptops and their ability, you know, their functionality, I guess, because that's what I'm hearing, individual community concerns and of course, MiFi's for the elementary schools.
Sure. And one clarity just for the board, the middle school laptops have been ordered, but no, every middle school's kid right now doesn't have a brand-new laptop in their hands. So you are correct that we've given out what we've had, and they don't all have a brand-new laptop. And some kids maybe still may need access to a laptop. That may still be true, that didn't get it in that first distribution that we did a little over a month ago. So we can follow up on that.
Great. Before I go to Gorbaks, I'm going to take a moment and just put some things out on the table. First, I am very concerned about the technology piece. I'm concerned about the technology piece, not only for our K through six and only allocating what I consider de minimis funds of, to it. And there seems to be a disconnect between how much we're investing now versus the proposal. I understand that the CARES Act funding does have to be expended by 1231 2020, so we should be front-loading anything that we need to use CARES Act funding for. I believe that that technology needs to get into the hands of our K through six as well as technology for our IAs so that we can have greater connectivity and support to our and, um, support to our community and to our students by having our IAs have technology as well. So I'd like to have a, a bit of a plan on that coming back. I also think it's really important when we look at this, that we need a coherent professional development plan, which includes what professional development takes place over the summer, what professional development takes place throughout the year, so that we can continuously involve, um, and, and reflect what additional, uh, pieces we need and involve our teachers in their own professional development. I am glad to see multiple options on the table because I think that the, uh, that we're all working in a situation where we really don't know how this is going to, change over time. And we need to have a flexible approach that allows us to address what's happening, both at the local level and at the individual school level. One thing I am concerned about, the PPE equipment, I would like a more detailed plan on the PPE to include, um, things like face shields and, uh, Plexiglas for those, uh, workers, such as our, um, bus drivers and our front, um, front desk workers. I would also like to have a better understanding of how we are going to, uh, if we're going to allow any volunteers in our schools, because obviously, the more people that we have congregating in a classroom or in a building, the higher the risk is to, um, spread COVID, um, inadvertently. I'm glad you've got some flexible schedule, um, recommendations. I would like to see, uh, a morning and afternoon opportunity because that would also perhaps give our families more flexibility where they could, um, choose what works best for them if they do a, if their child does early morning or, um, late afternoon, where they can substitute in, um, childcare. And the other piece is really important, which is the better communications with our family, families and, um, upfront involving them in level setting and letting them know what the expectations are, um, going for, forward. So kind of like back to school night virtually and earlier rather than later. So with that, um, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, Ms. Bukarski have all asked for go-backs. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Yeah, this, just really quickly, I, I know we're making tentative plans for a number of scenarios, but I am particularly concerned about, uh, offering PE and the arts. I know that, um, you know, in the schools oftentimes you may have kids who have different experiences and they may run. So those teachers may need, uh, additional types of protection, such as, uh, Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned. Um, I'm also just concerned about whether kids have access to that and to what extent. And so I'd just like to make sure that as we come back, that we talk specifically about how we're going to address those, access to those, those types of special programs.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Ms. Cohen?
Uh, I had three questions that I'll just ask and then, um, shut up and listen for the answers. Number one, um, what's the plan for having our seniors return their laptops? Number two, if we're offering summer programming, especially for our high schoolers, are, um, our ninth through 11th graders able then to keep those laptops in the summer? Which I know was not in our initial plan. And then the last question is, do we have a plan yet for staffing to get those new middle school laptops ready to go? I know last year we had all hands on deck. We wound up employing teenagers and had assembly lines of people getting these things off the truck and unwrapped and stickered and all of that. So do we already have a plan for that and know when they're coming in? And if so, um, are we able to use employees that are not currently able to work in our system to help us get those laptops ready to go? Thanks.
So i- in looking at the plans for seniors, we're working on a plan now for how seniors would, uh, return those laptops because we would need those laptops for our incoming ninth graders. Uh, so that's in the works and we'll be sharing that with the community, uh, once that plan is in place. For students who have computers now, we're asking that they just simply keep those computers, uh, so they would not have to return them to the school. It would only be those students in sixth grade who would be moving on to middle school. And, uh, essentially our, um, students moving into ninth grade would return their computers and seniors would return their computers. And with regard to the plan for implementing, we are waiting for those computers to come in. Uh, we have a plan in place. We've learned a lot from our, uh, high school distribution and, uh, we'll be working with our middle school, uh, principals, working with our middle school ESBS and T-Specs, uh, along with looking at some of those employees who may not be working, who could certainly help out with the implementation. So we feel like we have a good plan in place once the devices come in. We know that it won't be as intent, time-intensive because there are fewer computers, uh, than the high school. So, uh, yeah, very good questions and, and we feel that we have a plan for doing all of that. And we'll be sharing all of that with the board, uh, once we're ready to roll it out.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Marty.
Um, all right, just a quick, just a quick question around technology that I thought about. I know right now our, our plan for handing out laptops was that every family have access as opposed to every child. Obviously, we're one-to-one for high school and, uh, the plan is for middle school. But I've heard from a lot of constituents that with parents working at home and multiple children, that this is a constraint for them, for the children having access, maybe a constraint for us in having more robust distance learning. So, um, i- is there budgetary thoughts or plans on how to help our families so that our, if we do need to have more robust distance learning, that, um, we don't have to stagger our schedules as much because of access to technology and devices? Just something to think about as we plan going forward.
So just really quick, again, the plan would be, even in what we presented today, and I heard what Chairman Corbett Sanders say about even more technology. But if we got all of our inventory back, pushed it down to elementary and added 18,000 more laptops, which we would buy, we would have coverage for kindergarten through sixth grade.
For every child, that's what I wanted to confirm, as every family.
Every child, they wouldn't have to worry about, you know, it being one per family.
That's what I wanted to confirm, I wasn't clear on that.
Yep.
Ms. Bukarski?
Yes, I just wanted, uh, to clarify that my comments, um, in regards to full-time distance learning, in no way were, um, to, to imply that safety and health guidelines and data are not to be followed. That's always our concern and our number one, um, you know, guiding rule. Uh, two questions, I would like to know, how are we systematically evaluating our current distance learning, uh, delivery, so that we are better prepared for the fall? If this is going to be, which it probably will be some part of our, um, end plan, I believe.
So, thank you, this is Sloan. So we are working on a plan right now, um, that would involve, uh, reaching out to stakeholder groups, uh, in different ways, uh, through a survey instrument, uh, that we're in the process of developing, as well as some potential focus groups, uh, that we would interview to try to get a variety of different stakeholder perspectives about how distance learning, worked, uh, during the school closure period. You know, what worked well, what were the challenges, what were the issues, what are the things that we need to adjust? So, you know, again, we'd be looking at parents, students, teachers, uh, principals, uh, and other community members, uh, to get input and feedback on that. And that information could help us, obviously, as we move forward with our plans for next year.
Thank you, Sloan, that, that's great to hear. I think it's very important to understand, um, what is going on right now in our, our kids' homes and how they're accessing and how our parents are, um, dealing with everything. And that brings me into my last question, which is, um, could we look at perhaps offering during the summer, some type of parent support, you know, maybe our parent resource center? I don't know, maybe individually school-based, for our parents to better understand the platforms that our kids are using and, uh, be able to help them, uh, in the fall?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great suggestion. Uh, we do have some examples of where we've tried to do that. But I think something more structured, that would be something that our leadership team could look at to see if we could do on more of a wide-scale kind of division basis. Because I think parents have a lot of legitimate questions about the technology issues. Um, and it's not just the technology issues and platforms, but you know, what are the other things that they can do to make sure that their students are successful? How do you establish routines? How do you keep engagement? How do you keep motivation in place? Um, so I definitely think that could be something that we could enhance, uh, for the fall.
Thank you.
Starting in the summer, as you said, so, yeah.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. I think it would be very helpful for our families. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson?
Thank you so much. I just have a couple of remaining questions. One of them is regarding, um, the differentiation of instruction with whatever model that we move forward with or whatever scenario is utilized in the fall. That's one of the things that I think we have not been able to fully implement this time around. So I want to be sure that we're really intentional and ensuring that that is appropriate, that is, um, at the forefront and that is clearly articulated. Uh, one question, this may not necessarily be for the superintendents, just overall. Regarding the CARES Act, um, is there any information about that being a multi-year support? Or is it just right now, just for this year?
Just this year, it's one-time money. There is discussion, Micah Malloy's keeping us, uh, well briefed about whether Congress would consider a fifth or fourth stimulus, uh, act that would really be focused on local, uh, government, which would support, of course, uh, school districts, uh, but, uh, to be determined. Right now, though, that 20 million we talked to you about is one-time money.
I'm amazed, hold on a second, doesn't that need to be expended by the end of the fiscal, uh, end of, uh, the calendar year as well?
Uh, that's right, by the end of December, uh, and, uh, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you so much. I asked this question because in light of the expenditures that were outlined on slide 45, I, I just want to be cognizant of the fact that we do have some recurring, um, expenditures that I just need to be sure that we'll have some way of sup, of having the support to continue though, without getting into a whole other debacle of how are we going to afford these things moving forward? Particularly if the budget impact to our state is multi-year and so our, our funding from both the state and from our, um, county are less than what they are this year.
So I'll be glad to speak to that and to simply say, if, you're, you're right. Some of that, what we presented today covered for next year, but some of it is reoccurring money that's greater than the $8 million in the COVID reserve. It's like 5 million more. So we would either need to ask for more money, cut programs or look at other kinds of cuts to recoup that money in our operating budget. And as this board has already shared, we're going to spend a lot of the fall going through the budget and re-looking at how we can reprioritize it given the situations that we face currently with COVID-19.
Thank you. And my last comment is regarding those other spaces that, uh, and those other activities that happen in a school when we are under our normal, um, operations, recess, um, passing in the hallway, lunch. All of those spaces will need to be, um, determined in terms of what happens under any or all of these scenarios, because these are opportunities for a lot of contact. And again, what are we expecting for students who are our youngest, our preschool, our kindergarteners regarding whatever, um, personal protective equipment that they're allocated? Just to be sure that we have some developmentally appropriate expectations while still maintaining the health, um, restrictions that we do need to keep everyone safe.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Real quick, the elementary principals work, if you'll look through that, uh, worksheet, they started to drill down even on recess and how it could be provided. So we're starting to do that kind of detail and it would be important to communicate that out to all of our staff and to parents, so they understand.
Miss McLaughlin? Miss McLaughlin?
Yes, uh, I just wanted to, um, bring to raise attention, I'm going to be forwarding to you an article, um, that was coming from Professor Brummage from the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth. He's an immunologist. And one of the things that he talks about is that studying COVID so far, it does not appear that children are particularly adept at spreading the virus to each other or to adults, uh, when they've looked at where the risk factors are. And so I'm just seeing the article now, but that's another example of where we need to have public health data driving our decision-making. Because, um, certainly, um, parents having confidence of, of their children going into a public place like schools, but if it turns out that the, the actual public health research is showing that children may get it, but they're not necessarily carriers and they're also not getting sick from it like we see from adults. Um, this may also explain why many of the international, um, communities have moved back to starting school, getting kids back and learning. And I know we've talked about the social emotional impact of what we're doing with distance learning versus, um, the norm that our children thrive in, which is being in a building. So I just wanted to spotlight that, that this is my expectation that we do everything we can to get public health to inform, um, our actions going forward for the fall.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I think everybody agrees that it should be informed by public health. Unfortunately, there are conflicting public health professional opinions at this point. Ms. Darnak Kofax?
That was, uh, um, Karen, that was what I was going to point out. There, there is a New York Times article this morning on children, um, who did not, uh, exhibit any COVID symptoms, who are now exhibiting something called Kawasaki disease and they're dying from that. It's an inflammation of the lungs, the chest, that was in today's New York Times. I can forward that too. I think we all agree that health professional data is the way to move forward and we will do that step by step, um, ensuring that the safety of all of our children is the utmost um, in the forefront while, um, making sure that we, um, we all do what we, but we, we all get to the point where we want to be, which is back in the classroom. We absolutely all want to be there, but we have to do it in a safe way, a manageable way. And we have to look at all the data. So I, I just wanted to point that out, that there is conflicting, conflicting information on that front about children and what they're seeing and, and, uh, it's coming out of New York City right now, who was the, the first group that had the most cases and now they are on the downturn, but they're strangely seeing some of these, um, children now coming down with these issues.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax. Mr. Frisch?
Yeah, I just wanted to end by saying, I, I couldn't agree more that we need to have as much of the, uh, scientific information as possible next time we discuss this information. I wish that the United States was in the same position that other countries are in. Unfortunately, we've not tested nearly the number of people that these other countries have done, uh, per capita. And we do not have the same public health infrastructure that these other countries have. These other countries are supplying their, their first responders with the equipment they need to do their jobs, while our first responders across the country are being told to go without. So we can compare apples and apples, but, um, I think apples and oranges don't help anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. I believe, um, that that concludes everybody's wish for go-backs. Ms. Mulberg, did you happen to put together a, um, list of all the questions? Or shall we just make sure that each of the board members also sends them around?
I put together a few next steps, but not the questions.
Okay, could you put your next steps up, please?
Karen, just a point of clarification. I know I have a lot of questions.
Ms. Sizemore-Hizer?
So I, I, I know of a lot of questions that are on here. For, I think a time would be faster if we just emailed our questions to the board and the staff.
So what I'm going to ask you to do, please, Ms. Sizemore-Hyzer, is we will treat this similar to how we treat our budget questions. And so if you would send your questions to Dr. Brabran with a courtesy copy to Ms. Mulberg and I, then what we will do is make sure that we track all those questions and get you all answers.
That'd be great, thank you.
Dr. Brabran, who in addition to yourself, do you want those questions to go to? Who is your coordinator for that? Is that Ms. Smith?
For school board questions, how about send them to me and Kathleen Thomas, please?
Okay. That works.
And then she'll be able to work and form these out for the right person, whether it's Mr. Smith, Dr. Ivy, anyone on the leadership team. That would be helpful for communications, just taking these questions and then divvying them back up.
Okay. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, are there any concerns about the questions that are listed there or the next steps? I don't see any. Ms. Darnak?
I don't, I don't see anything listed.
You were on the screen a moment ago. Ms. Darnak Kofax, I'm going to ask Ms. Mulberg to put them back up again.
Yeah, if she could put them back up. Regarding functionality of middle for elementary and the status of MiFi for both middle school and elementary school students. That was just adding that too. Thank you.
Ms. Darnak Kofax, can we add to that what Ms. Cohen mentioned, which is the plan for retrieving those laptops that have already been distributed that may not be working quite as well?
Absolutely.
So ladies and gentlemen, we have been at it for over five hours and I know that a couple of board members have things they have to do this evening. We will get to you by Wednesday after CARES, a date for when we will continue this discussion. And if...
Ms. Corbett Sanders, it's Megan.
Oh, I didn't see your hand up, Megan, I'm sorry. Did you have your hand up? No.
I can't, I thought you were closing out the conversation.
That's, go ahead. What would you like, Ms. McLaughlin?
Nothing. I'm concerned is a crucial next step that several colleagues, including myself, said that we really need between now and the next school board meeting on this topic of returning to learn in the fall, that there is a timeline that gets clearly communicated out to the public because we're certainly receiving anxious emails from our families in particular, but also employees about what SCPS's timeline for starting to review and make this decision. So I think that's important, but it's not listed here.
Okay, that's a good idea, Ms. McLaughlin. And we will try to get more clarity on that timeline through the whole board after this meeting.
Thank you, again, I'm more concerned about the public. I know you'll take care of us.
Correct. Okay, anything else? So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your incredible hard work today. Thank you to the staff for all they've done up until putting together this initial plan. And we know that this is just the beginning of the conversation and there's more to come. This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.